Hello.
I have no idea, I'll ask him.
I'd like to call this meeting the Town of Ryenbeck Planning Board Two Order. There's been one modification in the agenda, and that is the Sofia Papakosanis, the Special Use Permit Site Plan along Route 308 with the Old D'Esquire Restaurant. That's been taken off the agenda. The applicant is asked to not proceed with that at this point in time. I think everything else stands as posted.
The other item on tonight's agenda, because of certain problems I'm having, which is probably a burst pipe, which I'm going to get back to. I've left my sister mopping up water. I'm going to defer this evening the secret presentation at the end of the meeting to our next session.
Okay. And another thing, we had discussed having an additional meeting this month on the 20th. We're then going to move it to the 21st or the 20th, Martin Luther King's birthday. The purpose for that meeting was to go over the FG EIS for grassmere. They're not going to be prepared to get that through us in a time when we're going to have a chance to look at it. And so what I think I'd like to do is ask for a motion and a second to cancel the meeting on the 20th and not reschedule for the 21st. What we can do is we can schedule a second meeting in February strictly to handle that. That gives all of us enough time to look at this when we get to it. Otherwise, it's going to be a couple days and there's no way we'll be able to get through it.
Should it be the 17th?
Yeah, it would be a second. So the first thing I'd like to do is I could get a motion to cancel the second meeting on January 20th.
Before you make the motion, just let me ask you a question about it. Is the applicant comfortable with that action?
The applicant is really not in control at this point.
I understand.
The basic agreement that we had was that the applicant is going to have the questions or the comments addressed by the end of last week such that I could then draft for the board the final G E I S. In other words, the applicant's responsibility is to address the issues. It is not the applicant's responsibility to actually prepare the final generic environmental impact statement. That is not only within the purview of, but it is the responsibility of the board. So the schedule was that I would basically work on that this week and have to this board, let's say by next Monday, a week before the meeting, for your consideration, the F G E I S. And that schedule is not being met. There's some substantial issues that were raised that are being addressed by the applicant's technical team.
No sense in rushing.
No.
So can I hear a motion to cancel the meeting on the 20th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, how do you feel about a second meeting in February? The 17th is President's Day, so I think the 18th, Tuesday, the 18th, would be the one we would go for, assuming that this room is empty. Shall we tentatively schedule for February 18th, 6:30, strictly to deal with the grassmere final generic environmental impact statement? Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does that mean he couldn't be ready for the 3rd?
We have other things on the 3rd, and we wanted to set something aside just for them.
No, you will not see it on the 3rd because, again, it's my intent that, I believe the planning board as a courtesy needs that document and it's in hands a week before the meeting, which means, well, maybe, yeah, maybe we'll get it here for the 3rd, but that would be a follow-up. Yes, it would be, it's going to have about a three-meeting consideration. So the 3rd and the 17th are possible.
18th.
18th.
13th to 18th.
All right.
Any more time, you want to do that? Yeah, we just alluded to do a scheduled meeting on the 18th at 6:30 strictly to deal with the F G E I S for grassmere. Also, it's my pleasure to tell you that Sharon Sharad has been reappointed for seven years to serve on this board. Way to go, Sharon. And in their wisdom, they come aboard, reappointed chair and Melody Duff's chair for the year of raucous behavior. Could I hear a motion to accept Art's meeting notes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And I see we have before us, we have minutes from December 16th and November 18th. If you have a chance to review them, I know they're all circulated.
Yes.
Could I hear a motion to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2013?
Done.
Second?
Second.
Any additions, amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I hear a motion to accept the minutes of December 16th?
So moved.
All in favor? Actually, whoops, second?
Second.
Any changes, additions, amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right then. I know of no non-agenda items, anything like that, which I think brings us right up to our public hearing for this evening. Paul Matthews, All Post Road subdivision class, continuation from December 16th, 2013, of conduct of public hearing on application for subdivision plat approval in matter of proposed consolidation of two parcels totaling 13.66 acres in the local waterfront redevelopment area and the rural countryside RC5 district being enlisted. I'm your speaker. Who's here to represent? Silence over the room. Joni, did you hear anything from, okay, neither did I. Well, we can choose to continue the public hearing and inform them.
The door just opened.
Do you want to give them a shot? We will continue the public hearing to...
Can we proceed with other business and see if they show up? Or do we need to take an action right now?
You can do that.
Why don't we just leave it until later in the meeting in case?
They show up. Okay. Was anyone here for the Paul Matthews subdivision public hearing? I don't want anyone here anywhere. So no one cares if we hold it open. Excellent. All righty.
Well, but if they have some new information to present to us because Nick was supposedly...
Oh, there's a whole bunch of new information that's going to have to come up with. Okay. Moving right along to Joanna Pealella.
Applicant's here, so you can move ahead of schedule.
This is the initial presentation of application for special use permit and site plan review and approval in the matter of proposed extension of the Old Ryenbeck Inn, from a three-bedroom to a four-bedroom bed and breakfast in the rural countryside RC5 district. Just a little background on this, I know, and she got a variance from the ZBA back in 2000 something.
Four, I think it was.
Right, to go from three bedrooms to four, but no one ever told her then she had to come to the planning board to amend her stuff for permanent site plan. But now the new zoning law allows five bedrooms, and since the variance was never acted on, it's basically time barred at this point. So what she's doing is applying for a special use permanent site plan to different span to four bedrooms, yes.
When you say that the variance was never acted upon, I mean, we acted upon it and that we've been operating with four rooms.
No, 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 I usually come to the planning boards who...
Yeah, I guess I was under the impression, because there was never a follow-up, that we did all that we were supposed to do.
Exactly. No, you were not told that you then, by the way, you have your variance.
Right. Is it not a variance to the, I guess I thought that the process was that the variance was the variance to the three-room bed and breakfast special use permit, and the variance was to make it a fourth?
Basically, it's to allow you to apply for the fourth bedroom.
Okay.
It sort of amends the zoning law. In your case, for about four bedrooms, then you have to come with the application to the planning board to then actually get a final approval to do that.
Okay.
And so today, the new law allows five bedrooms, so you're just going to do a special permanent site plan under the new law, and everything, you know, is fine.
Okay, cool.
Okay. So that's what we're doing here tonight. And maybe you've just, I guess you did sort of explain what this is all about.
Yep.
I don't know if there's anything else that we need, another presentation that the planning board will need.
The application materials appear complete.
Yeah.
And the only recommendation I did make, and it's the one that you've already kind of followed through on, is we just put aside the question, the matter of the variance having been issued. That variance technically is time barred, but it doesn't have to be considered in this particular case in that the zoning law has been amended in the interim to allow a five-bedroom bed and breakfast therefor. This can be simply considered under the provisions of the new law and not raise any issues about the fact that the full follow-through did not occur within one year on the variance. And to the applicant's credit, it's clear in the record that she was not totally advised of the requirements for follow-through, and in fact was granted ACL for the fourth bedroom.
So absolutely no reason to think you hadn't done everything you invited the town to.
And I think the only other thing I noted in the record, which is of importance, is in place a current certificate or permit from the county health department to operate what it considers a, quote, roaming house. So you've got a procedural resolution to move forward on.
Which I will proceed on. Yes, ma'am.
Does this mean that, like, we're done, or we still have to go through all that other stuff?
What you're going to go through now is we're going to accept your application. We're going to assign two planning boards, they're going to come and take a look, do a site visit. There'll be a public hearing at our next meeting, which is February 3rd.
Third, yeah.
And then we will be able to close the public hearing, and we'll have an approval resolution for you that night.
Okay, then do we still have to do the notify all the neighbors and all that paper?
That will be part of the public hearing.
Okay.
Joni will help you with that.
Okay.
And also, I just want to emphasize, there's no notice of violation or anything on this, so you can just continue operation as you are. There's no reason for you to stop.
Okay.
All righty. The Town of Ryenbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the December 11th, 2013 application by Joanna Peoella?
Peolala.
Okay, I'll just point to you. For special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 125-21, District Schedule of Area and Bulk Regulations, Section 125-68 PPPO, Specific Standards for a Bed and Breakfast Establishment, and Section 125-73, uses subject to site plan approval in the matter of legalization of a bed and breakfast establishment with four guest rooms, Old Ryenbeck Inn, at 340 Wirtenburg Road in the rural countryside RC5 district as heretofore subject to a certificate of occupancy granted by the Town Code Enforcement Officer in around 2004, and a current permit to operate a rooming house as issued by the Dutchess County Health Department. One, accepts the applications and related supporting materials, including sketch floor plans and site plan as adequate for commencing review by the planning board, the planning board's advisors, and the public. Classifies proposed action as a Type 1 action due to its location within or adjacent to property listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and deems the planning board as sole involved agency and lead agency under seeker for review thereof. Three, in the presence of the history of this matter and in the absence of any proposed modifications in either the building or the site which might cause an environmental impact, weighs requirement for submission of a full EAF Part 1, and instead accepts for the record the short EAF Part 1 affirmed by...
Joanna Peoella.
On December 9th, 2013. I have to do this, otherwise I could... Schedules of the public hearing on the applications for Monday, February 3rd. Let's make this the first one at 6:40.
6:35, right?
6:35, okay, 6:35 PM. And directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements of Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125-66 and 125-77. Refers the applications to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Economic Development for review and advisory opinion pursuant to the requirements of Section 239 of the General Municipal Law, and delegates planning board members who wants to go out to a nice bed and breakfast.
I would love to.
Okay. Jesse and Bob. Two, conduct a field visit to the bed and breakfast establishment and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Without prejudice to information that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of the above cited referral and field visit, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare a draft seeker resolution, negative declaration, and draft approval resolution for consideration by the planning board when and if timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
So you'll give a call, and, okay, sounds good.
You have a number?
Yep, 871-1745.
I'm better than others.
Yeah.
You do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I still see no one for Matthews subdivision, so moving right along. So Quentin Johnson Irrevocable Trust, 12 Primrose Hill Road subdivision plat. Sketch plan conference and initial presentation of application for subdivision plat for lot line alterations precedent to transfer and consolidation of portions of the trust lands totaling 9.342 acres into the rural countryside district and those of the adjacent properties of Patrick and Mary Kelly and lands of Carl Meyer. Planning board review of sketch plan and application and related processing as may be timely in Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land and seeker. Marie, take it away.
Good evening, happy new year. I believe everyone has received a copy of the subdivision, proposed subdivision map, the lot line alteration map, the application form, the short environmental assessment form, which I filled out prior to knowing that this house on this property, on the Johnson property, is in the National Register of Historic Places. So way back when I first brought this lot line alteration, and I didn't ask the planning board a question via email whether or not this property that is the subject of the lot line alteration was a natural subdivision due to the fact that Primrose Hill Road was a taking by the county and basically cut off this land from the rest of the property. I think the only thing that it would be lacking would be a tax ID number, which the owners could request of the Dutchess County real property. It wasn't going to, I didn't think it was going to be an issue until I found out the house was on the Register of Historic Places, and now I've got to do a long-form environmental assessment form and all the stuff that goes along with that. And I thought if we could determine that it could get its own grid number and it would be a separate parcel, then maybe we could avoid that additional complication. But other than that, the adjacent owners on the south and on the east have expressed an interest to the Johnsons. They would like to acquire this land. It's basically unusable land. Part of it's in a wetland buffer or wetland adjacent area. I guess they don't like the term buffer anymore. And this will, when Mr. Meyer combines it with his adjacent properties, it will be going into a conservation easement because the rest of his land that is attaching to is in a conservation easement. And so the application is just basically to change hand, change the ownership of the land on the south side of Primrose Hill Road at this location.
The question is, and I don't know the answer. I know that, for example, my neighbors, they own, on Slate Quarry Road, it runs through their property, they own the little land where the signs, after people keep running over, across from their house. And it's still considered their property.
Right, but number one, it's not, Slate Quarry in that location is not fee ownership, it's a user room.
It's a user room.
Right, in this case, it's fee ownership. The county came along and said, we're taking this land from you. It now belongs to us.
I would think it would almost have to be considered as a...
If it's fee, it's separate.
Yeah.
At one point, the county went around and gave all those lots separate grid numbers, and a lot of people found out, didn't pay taxes on both grids, and lost a piece of property to taxes.
Exactly.
Because they didn't realize that the county...
Johnson, they haven't had that problem with this piece of property...
The county did not give it a separate grid number.
Didn't.
But they could request it. So that is just something that would kind of make it a little bit easier. That's the main reason that I'm asking the board to take it under consideration. Other than that, I guess if you looked at it and everything else is pretty much...
She's very straightforward.
That's what I think.
There's a procedural glitch here.
Question, Marie. When you filled out the short EAF, did you use the new EAF mapper?
Yes, I did.
And that responded negative on the historic site question?
No, I just assumed. I don't think, I'm sorry, I know what you mean, because I did use that for...
I was just curious as to whether it was giving accurate information. I've tried it in a couple cases and has enough.
Okay, I did not use it on that. I'll try it just to see what happens, but, no, I know what you're, I didn't know that you, I could do that with the wetlands and the...
So that's got to be...
Wildlife and foreign one. I didn't know you could do it with historic places.
Well, under the new system that's set up by DEC, what you do is you actually fill out your short EAF online. What happens is you go in, you identify your location, the DEC service provides to you a partially completed, either short form or long form, that you've requested, that indicates all of the information that's available from the state files.
Okay.
Like historic wetlands and all of the rest. So you actually get, on the long form, you get 13 of the questions answered for you.
Oh, gee, maybe that made it a whole lot easier.
Then you proceed on that, you know, from that point, completing the form. It provides you a PDF at that point that you then fill out.
Yep.
With respect to the Type 1 question here, there's no development being proposed here of any type.
Absolutely.
Right.
I believe the planning board is within the authority, as you just dealt with, with respect to the...
Payola?
Situation of classifying, of recognizing that this is in fact a Type 1 as opposed to an unlisted. But because there is nothing happening, you waive the requirement for submission of the full EAF and simply accept the short EAF.
I certainly have no objection to doing that. Does anyone...
Because, I mean, the long EAF is basically, if there's going to be an environmental impact, and there is none.
Exactly.
You know, I'm going to put an iron pin in the ground to separate one of the two properties from the other, but that's really not, a little rust, that's not really environmentally hazardous.
Any questions, anyone on the planning board? Why don't I read the resolution and see how everyone feels?
Yeah, and what we're going to do is we're going to, in three, in the numbered paragraph three, you'll change unlisted to Type 1, and at that point, we'll insert some language to stop at that point, and I'll insert some language regarding accepting the short form.
Due to the actual use of the land as a subdivision.
Right, exactly.
Okay. All right. The Town of Ryenbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows in the matter of proposed lot line alterations by the Quentin Johnson Irrevocable Trust, as presented by Marie T. Welch, Land Surveyor, which is implemented through transfer and consolidation of portions of the trust lands with adjacent fans of Patrick and Mary Kelly and lands of Carl Meyer. One, endorses the sketch plan as considered in pre-submission conference conducted through email with the chairman and the planning consultant on October 23rd, 2013, and presented to the planning board by Marie T. Welch, Land Surveyor, on January 6th, 2014. Two, accepts the December 19th, 2013 application for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land inclusive of a surveyor's map entitled Lot Line Alteration, prepared for the Quentin Johnson Irrevocable Trust by Ms. Welch, and dated November 7th, 27th, 2013, and other supporting materials, including a short EAF Part 1 and an agricultural data statement as adequate for commencing review by the planning board, the board's advisors, and the public. Three.
Oh, go on, classified.
Classifies the application as a minor subdivision lot line alteration and the proposed action as an...
A Type 1.
Action under seeker for which corneal environmental quality review will not be undertaken due to the...
No, a Type 1 action, period. In consideration of the fact that there are no, there's no proposed development on the land involved within the subdivision, which might cause an environmental impact, weighs requirement for submission of a full EAF Part 1, and instead accepts for the record the short EAF Part 1 affirmed by Mr. Johnson on December 13th.
All right. Four, schedules a public hearing on the application for February 3rd, 2014 at 6:40 PM, and directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land Section 101-4.4D1. Further directs the clerk to distribute the AGDAC data statement in accordance with the requirements of the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets. Delicates planning board members who would like to go see this.
I'll go.
Me.
And Sharon. Very good. I knew it was you, I just had to...
We're not going tomorrow, by the way.
Oh, it's going to be brisk and doo.
I didn't want to deal with April.
I'll be out in July.
To conduct a field, both subdivision site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Without prejudice to information that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of the above cited referral and field visit, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare a draft seeker resolution, negative declaration, and if draft, and draft approval resolution for consideration by the planning board when and if timely.
Delete the words referral and, simply the above cited field visit.
Okay, above cited field visit. Ah, yes. Okay. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. So can Mrs. Woody, Sharon, have they'll coordinate with you and go out in the nicest, it's going to be like Friday, much nicer.
It's going to be snow, it hurts.
Really?
Yeah.
Coincidentally, in...
You're the focal point?
On both the Johnson and the earlier Peola. You see, there's no referral to the CAB because there's no development proposed.
And I notify Ag and Markets, I love them.
I believe so.
That's what I've done in the past.
Yeah, well, that way we know they get it, so that's, because I won't probably get it done.
Joan?
Joan would get it done for sure, but I'll just...
And you know that crazy little statement needs to be on there.
Yes, the one that I put on the line.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Marie. All right, next up, the still, we're not doing Matthews yet? Nope. This is the Duffy-Easter Tea House River Road, I read one of three special use permit and site plan. This agenda item involves the conduct, let me see, wait a minute, let me get this here. Okay. Sketch plan conference in the matter of proposed site and building modifications including creation of accessory dwelling units and a single-family residential use of the 32.349 acre lands formerly McGuire, with addition of a proximity 10-acre convent site in the Historic Preservation HP20 and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District in the town's LWRA. Planning board discussion establishment of requirements for application submissions and initial processing is may be timely. Okay.
Under seeker.
Under seeker.
Only seeker.
Hi, so I'm Christopher Courtney, I'm from Jack Litch Gardner Architects, representing my client, London Duffy.
Understand the word, yes.
This is the sketch plan, we have others if we want to pass them out, otherwise this is a...
Unusual.
Michael, what's the best thing to do, to walk everybody through, or have people been made familiar?
Yeah, I think so, I think so. Do you have any smaller?
I have more of these only, no smaller ones.
Why don't we spread some?
If you could just provide two of those, I've seen it, if you could provide two of those for down here in... Or maybe three of them, so...
We're friendly.
You're okay with that? All right. Two will do.
Tell them that we do like to get them in smaller format.
Thank you.
Right, they're all set.
Yeah, it's just the word copy, but I've got a modified version, it's basically it.
So it's best to walk everybody through it, yeah?
Yeah.
So starting, can you guys hear me from here?
You can help.
You need to take the mic because of the...
They won't pick it up on the hand.
So let's start with the left side of the, the property is located at 195 River Road. It's obviously therefore on the Hudson River. The client has just acquired 31 Carmel Drive, which is where the convent is. So there's two points of access from River Road. Starting with the west side of the plan, there's the existing, what's labeled as Brick House, which is the current residence. The first thing the client is looking to do is to put in an accessory dwelling unit inside, which is that dashed line next to the Brick House, the red dashed line. It will consist of, it's a pool and guest house, so there will be four bedrooms, three bathrooms, and a pool. That's the main portion of work. Secondarily, there is an existing frame building here, noted as frame building. We're also calling it Barn 1. This was added earlier this year in the summer. It was intended as a barn only for storage, and there's deemed to not be enough space for the client's equipment, so I'll jump to that in a second. He's going to build a second barn, but in the meantime, he wants to turn this into into a guest house. So that obviously requires a special use permit for accessory dwelling unit. Jumping up to the left, where it says Glass Guest House, there is an existing frame shed right now that's kind of dilapidated, so he would like to tear that down. He would also like to build a small guest house here, which would just be a one, one room, basically bedroom on a, on a main floor, and then below that, just a small room with kitchen and bathroom. This is, this is within the trees. It's hard to see, but there's, there's a forest area over here. And then the other building he's interested in putting in is a four car garage barn for the equipment, and that will be for equipment only. Generally, otherwise, there is some landscaping to be added, and it's mostly screening. Screening for a couple reasons, one is between the neighbor to the south for, in general, the existing barn one that's here, as well as the new work that's gonna happen, just to continue to add privacy for both parts of the properties. And additionally, some screening over to the west, sort of between the client's property and the existing nursing home that is to the east. There are two smaller pieces, three smaller pieces of work as well on the south entry. He's interested in putting a security gate, and then the same thing at the east entry, and also one to separate himself from Carmel Drive, which kind of continues through, say Carmel Drive.
What do you mean by separate himself from?
Well, there's currently the, it's not Carmel Drive, it's Yeah. This road runs through, through, from River Road, through the nursing home, and then through and connects to the, to his property. So I think at one point, there may have been just an open access easement, and so people still tend to leave the nursing home and drive on this road, which is technically his property, so he'd like to kind of minimize that. And so he'd like to just put basically a security gate up there. I think the interest is to not make that be mechanical, so that if people do need to get out in an emergency or something, that they can, but, but basically to, to block access onto his property.
Will the owner, the applicant be using Carmel Drive as the primary entrance to his property?
Yes, yes. He won't be relinquishing necessarily this road here, but, but using this as the primary access, yes.
Now, I know that there has been some issues about the lighting that currently exists on the site.
Yes.
Part of what's gonna be required in the site plan will be a lighting plan
Yes.
For, for
Entire.
For everything, exactly, exactly.
Meeting, meeting our lighting standards and whatnot, so I just, but I want to emphasize that, because I know there's been a lot of discussion, I know you've been working on all that and everything too, but I know that that's gonna be
It's gonna come up.
A major consideration as far as, you know, integrating this into the neighborhood.
Okay.
Other members of the board with questions? Here's the other thing I would just mention, and I think that, first of all, you need to understand when this barn, this other building was put up this summer, they did get a building permit, and I believe people had gotten a CO also. It shouldn't have happened, it should have come before the planning board because of the location, the special requirements, things of that sort. So that structure and its function will be part of the overall approval process now of the site plan and the special permits going forward.
Yeah, because an improperly issued permit has no, has no standing.
Right.
The plan essentially has not, the concept has not changed since I reviewed it, right?
Correct. The only difference is we, the client was considering the location of the pool house, and it's
For the, for the benefit of the board, the review that I conducted after the pre-submission conference, or on the basis of the pre-submission conference, which is included in your notes, applies. I think it outlines, as we've agreed, what the, what the basic application requirements are, seeker requirements, et cetera. One clarification is regardless of what Mr. Duffy chooses to call these, for some of these particular structures, the guest houses are not guest houses. They are accessory detached units. Under the terms of the zoning law, a guest house cannot include kitchen facilities. So these are accessory residential structures and subject to the special use permit requirements that are associated with that particular type of occupancy. It's not an issue in terms of they're being prohibited, but they, they do have to qualify as accessory dwelling units. Of course, it's spelled out in the, in my letter, there is the, you know, the whole matter here of compliance with stormwater regulations, there's a whole matter of compliance with health department requirements for water supply, sanitary sewage for each of the, each of the occupancies, et cetera. But essentially, my review comments stand as presented in December. Are you submitting at this time the, the EAF or not?
We, we did submit it today, so obviously nobody had a chance to look at it. We brought some copies as well, but
Okay, yes, so let me see a copy of that, please.
Certainly more hefty than you.
Yes, it is. Very good. Yeah, I
Yeah, typically every member of the town, we get a cow back.
I wanna know what the condition is in the council.
Oh, I can ask?
I just didn't know if art was just on
What are you doing with this building?
Oh, sorry, I didn't Yeah, the, the convent is being demolished as a separate building, building inspect, building permit only, as per our conversation in a pre-conference with these guys.
As I explained, they're tearing down the convent, taking up the pad it's on, the asphalt service areas around it, and it's gonna be a lawn. This is a historic structure, basically all it requires is a demolition permit for any building
Demolition permit, exactly.
To make sure
Isn't there a sewage connection involved there and a water connection to the nursing home? Because when we went through that with the previous applicant of that, they were looking at that, so that has to be
Be closed properly.
Closed properly.
So that would probably be part of the demolition permit.
Correct.
And
Can you talk to me a little bit about the historic integrity of the Brick House? What's it like on the exterior?
The, I have
In terms of its significance and its
From my, from my understanding, it's not listed as a historical
It's what?
From my understanding, it's not listed as a historical building. It, it does encompass what used to be the original Astor Tea House. The owner of the land before the current client had an addition added to the house. So there's only one facade of the, of that existing Astor Tea House. On the inside, it's still sort of preserved as to what it was, but it's, it's now interior.
I'd certainly like to see some documentation on what changes have occurred, to what extent those changes have occurred.
I think part of the issue here too is that it hasn't been delisted, so as far as
Still listed.
It's still listed, so it's as if the additions weren't there, as far as the listing, as far as the status on both the federal list and, and state list is concerned, it's still there.
Okay.
Even though it has been altered.
Unfortunately, I didn't bring copies, but that's the, the front of the house at the moment, and this is the back, so this is the existing Tea House. Pass this down. When the, when the house was purchased, it was, when the house was purchased, it was covered only in stucco. So, so far, the client's already taken at least a step to try to get it to feel a little more, as much as possible, this is the, this is the Tea House.
Well, I'd like to see it compared to historic photographs as well. Not, not tonight, but as part of the process, I'd like to see that. And my, my initial reaction is to not like the asymmetry of it, my initial reaction. I think it changes the whole look of a, of a property when you're kicking this one wing out, which is, if I'm reading it properly, you're only going in one direction with this addition. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
I mean, that's, it doesn't strike me as anything that would be consistent with the Secretary of the Interior's standards in terms of design, but that's my initial reaction.
Sure, sure. I mean, it's posing a challenge in, in design.
Pardon me?
It's posing a challenge in design for us as well to, to use that, to use that and the house, and a sort of forecourt landscaped courtyard for parking to kind of bring it all together. So it's definitely the intent to have it feel not so mishmashed as it, as it kind of already does to a certain degree with the roof lines, and so there's an interest to pull it all together and make it feel more
Well, I hope in the future I'll see that, but certainly looking at it from this perspective, it doesn't look like it's moving in the right direction.
I just want to say, in fairness to the applicant, when we were discussing that, the thought was that the, the pool house, the pool was gonna be an, a standalone structure.
Uh, which is now attached.
Yeah, further, somewhere in this area, and we thought that from a open space
Well, yeah, and that makes a big difference to have it separate.
This was the initial thinking.
This is, this is my initial thought, it was gonna be right there.
Uh.
And the thinking was this to consolidate it, at least, since this has already been somewhat trespassed upon.
It doesn't work architecturally.
It just, you know, from an open space standpoint, it made more sense to consolidate, although from an architectural standpoint.
Also, scale is just, it looks like it's absolutely consuming the, you know, this is not a minor addition to a house, this is a
No, it's large.
Major, large addition, so it's, it's, it's hard to think of it as being subservient in any way to that main house.
It's a, it's a challenge, I mean, the house has suffered from previous alteration. And so certainly, it is a challenge for you to try and integrate what you're gonna do and try and retain what you possibly can of the, of the character and the integrity of the original Astro structure.
What, is there any information available on what the original landscaping of this property was? The road systems, the layout of the landscape? There's a lot of development going on, what was historic property that, without that inform, I mean, I'm assuming it was probably pretty open.
That would be my assumption too, but like, we, we can look into that and include that information with the applicant.
Contact Nancy Kelly, the town historian.
Okay.
I also believe she has some friends, one of whom owns the old manager's house for the Astro estate, and transferred a lot of the buildings and things like that, I believe, were found there, and there may be some landscaping, yes.
I have some.
Okay. So we may have some good historic documentation that may help guide you in how things are sited and how things are done, so we can preserve to the greatest extent possible.
Well, and preserve as much open space. This is a, an intense proposal, and one that's pretty spread out.
Other members of the planning board, questions for the applicants?
The lady in the back of the room said she had some pictures, are you familiar with who she is?
No, I'm not.
I would certainly suggest that you talk to her, she's a next door neighbor.
Okay.
In Astro ports.
Okay.
Kathy Hammer is her name.
And be happy to, to record the meeting, to try and get some of this different information because the historic society, I think, has a great deal of information. I know that none of other people
A great deal of interest.
Have brought a lot together. The state may want to have a good deal, I don't know.
There's a lot of property, I mean, there's a lot of information on the Astro property, so there's a lot of background information I think we need to have come out.
I think it'll help you too in your designs
Sure, of course.
To try and hold this together. Other questions, members of the board? Do you feel, do you feel, or do you feel it might be helpful to do a continuation of the application, if you might want to refine how you're, how you're thinking from this together before you actually go to the expense and trouble of putting an actual application together? Would that be helpful to you?
At the, at the moment, no, not without speaking to, with the client, and just giving him feedback from this.
So you feel prepared to actually develop the applications and submit those?
Yes, yes.
Okay. For the board, and basically the, yes, there might be a relocation or whatever in the pool house, but essentially the, the layout plan is, is as you've established it right now for a sketch plan. Okay. That being the case, what the board needs to do procedurally is initiate the seeker compliance process here by declaring its intent to serve as lead agency, which again is a 30 day time clock, notifications, the other agencies, et cetera. In order to do that, it would simply be the circulation of the EAF Part 1 and the sketch plan. There's a draft resolution, procedural resolution to that effect in your, in your notes. That will then put you in a position of dealing with the applications once they're received, as well as dealing with environmental issues such as the ones just been raised of whether the choice of the pool house location has a negative impact on the historic, on the historic resource.
And, well, of course, we are geological potential questions in terms of, as you cite things.
One thing I, I just looked through the EAF, the clearer documentation, I, I'm surprised by the limited amount of site disturbance that's, that's identified here. It says less than, it says about a half acre of site disturbance, and I just don't see that happening with respect to modifications in redways and parking arrangements and construction of pool house buildings and sanitary sewage disposal systems throughout the site and landscaping throughout the site. It just seems to me that there's gonna be more than a half acre of site disturbance, and therefore, more likely a need for a speedy stormwater permit. So I think the site engineers have to take a good hard look at that.
The trenching is, the trenching, the
Yeah, yeah.
The trenching along the, the road, the horizon, and security trenching is
Significant.
Significant.
Any other comments or questions, or members of the board? Art, anything else you'd like to
No, the, I'd suggest you, you move with the procedural resolution, and I'll certainly review in detail the EAF, but it's, I just, it's sufficient for circulation. Other agencies may have comments, and go with it from there.
Very good.
And then you will sit tight until the actual applications for special use permit, various applications for, for special use permit accompanied by a composite site plan application is received.
Do you have anything else you'd like to ask before I kick this thing off? No? Okay. The Town of Rydell Planning Board hereby acts as follows in the matter of proposed site and building modifications, including creation of accessory dwelling units as part of the single family residential use of the 32.349 acre lands formerly McGuire with addition of a proximity 10 acre convent site on the west side of River Road in the Historic Preservation HP20, Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District in the town's LWRA. One, classifies the proposed action as a type 1 action under seeker. Two, declares the planning board's intent to serve as lead agency under seeker for required coordinated environmental review of the proposed action. Three, identifies the Duchess County Health Department, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and the Town of Rydell Zoning Board of Appeals as other potential involved agencies, and the New York State Office for Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, the New York State Department of, the New York State Department of State Coastal Management Program, the Duchess County Department of Planning and Economic Development, and the Town's Waterfront Advisory Committee as interested agencies. Four, authorizes the chairman with the assistance of the planning consultant and clerk to distribute a notice of intent to serve as lead agency under seeker through the other potential involved agencies and as otherwise required under Part 617 NYCRR, and for informational purposes to the interested agencies and the planning board's advisors, send a notice to be accompanied by copies of the full EAF Part 1 and a project wide sketch plan. Could I have a motion to approve?
Looked.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay.
Just for clarification, in four, does that refer this to Nancy Kelly, the historian? Because she seems to be not getting some of these
Uh, in four, yes, the, where I've indicated
She would be the planning board advisor.
I intend to include in the circulation the CAB, the historian, and obviously myself and the town, and the planning board engineer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, Nancy, Nancy definitely needs to be addressed. Okay.
Be included on the
Circulation.
So I guess the next one we're expecting from you would just be the full application for the different permits, site plan. I guess you're aware of the coastal assessment form for the local waterfront utilization, you're aware of, okay.
I think they've completed it already.
Okay. Because what we could do is we can get that to the waterfront advisor
Not until the applications are in play, oh, we can submit it, but
Yeah.
The waterfront advisor can't do it until the applications are
No, but at least they'll know what's coming.
Exactly.
They'll appreciate that. Okay, very good. So we'll see you in a month.
Most likely, our applications won't be until early February, so
See you in two months. See when we see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget to take your large drawing pens.
Joan will probably be in contact for copies, additional copies for this, for the distribution.
Small copies, can we start getting?
Possible to just give us small sort of size of the board of this? And this is yours.
Yes, that's
May I keep this? Thank you.
Can you put them on a PDF file? Oh, okay, super, yeah, I, I prefer, because you take the text on that drawing and you shrink it down.
You can't see it.
I'm gonna have a pair of glasses that, that figure around to see it.
You can zoom in on the PDF.
Next item on the agenda, Redwing Properties Inc., this is the former Kinlan mine site of 234286 White Schoolhouse Road, special use permit. Initial presentation of application for special use permit and site plan review and approval in the matter of proposed renewal of special use permit to continue mining within nine acres of 38 acre life of mine area within the rural countryside RC5 and soil mining overlay, and to introduce, within the nine acre, nine acre area, sub aquous mining, planning board review of applications and processing is maybe timely under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning with acknowledgement of status of New York State DEC as lead agency under seeker.
I don't know what information you want from me, this is a renewal. I didn't know how far you guys got with your review, since I didn't submit this until December 13th, I believe. So I know it's always been a renewal.
We've, we've had the application for a few weeks, we didn't get that.
Right.
I don't know how up to date everything is, you might just want to discuss exactly what's
Okay, there's basically two changes. The number one is Redwing Properties is now the owner of the former Kinlan mine site on White Schoolhouse Road. The second change is basically the 38 acre life of mine area is out of material, so now we've been approved to go below water into the water table with a nine acre lake 30 feet deep.
And DEC did approve this modification to the existing permit for the 38 acre
Yes.
Mine site. That was approved last year.
Last March.
March 27th.
Yeah.
Technically, it's 37 and a half acre mine site and it's a 35-foot deep pond. I've been through the application.
Sometimes I get my numbers wrong.
Yeah. For the, just for the, for the board, I've gone through the entire package that was put together by my, by Griggs Lang. Very comprehensive package, there's no question about it, and it explains the history of what's been going on with this, what was originally called an interim expansion while a larger potential change in the life of mine. It's been under review for, at DEC now for the better part of five or six years, I guess it is.
Yeah, a new, a new draft environmental impact statement was submitted to them right around Thanksgiving.
Right.
So they're currently reviewing that.
DEC is still, still, the review of, any DEC consideration of the expanded life of mine is separate from this particular, this particular request for renewal of the existing permit within the life of mine area with this modification to allow the subaqueous, subaqueous Consequently, certainly my recommendation, the information that's here is more than sufficient for the board to proceed with processing of the application, typically field visit, notifications, scheduling a public hearing, et cetera. The only question that arises from a, from a town perspective, recognizing that the actual operations of a mine site is something within the purview of DEC, but that the use of the land as well as the control of the highway network, et cetera, is within the purview of the town. Obviously, the use is authorized. This is with, we're still within the life of mine area that had been previously authorized by the town. It's within the mining overlay that was established under the zoning law. What has occurred, and the DEC permit as reissued or renewed in March includes, carries forward essentially the recommendations that were made to DEC a number of years ago about restricting the hours of operation and the day, days of operation and things of that sort. The issue that arises on the basis of new ownership, again, the permits run with the land, but the issue that arises with respect to the new ownership is that, is the operation changing such under the new ownership so as to create a additional traffic burden, a heavier traffic burden on the local road network? And is the subaqueous mining going to add to the volume material that's going to be out, going out of this mine and the frequency of movements? Consequently, in the procedural resolution that I provided for your consideration this evening, I asked, suggested that you ask the applicant to provide some additional information with respect to those questions prior to or at the public hearing, and upon receipt of that information, you have that information reviewed by essentially the agent of jurisdiction, in that particular case being the town highway superintendent. Other than that, the application I think is extremely complete. The one item that, one additional item that is missing, and I trust it's simply an oversight, is I did not find in the package that Paul and his folks put together, a document indicating that DEC had transferred the permit from Vincent Kinland to Redwing.
I can provide a copy of that.
Right. And again, for the record, because again, we're doing the same thing here. We'll be renewing a special permit that was issued by Kinland for Redwing.
Do you anticipate any changes in the intensity of use?
No, we have done nothing since the March permit. There's a few restrictions there, but I anticipate starting very limited operations in the spring of this year. Really be honest with you, if the economy doesn't pick up, there's not going to be a whole lot going on.
I think, I just think it's a question that the board simply needs to ask and needs to get a response on the record concerning, particularly in light of the fact that interestingly, DEC in this particular case, while DEC classified this project as an unlisted action and issued an EGDEC, it also said, other involved agencies may reach an independent determination of significance. That's unusual language for DEC to use, and obviously any independent determination of significance could only relate to matters within the town jurisdiction as opposed to DEC jurisdiction.
Clearly, one of those is traffic, given the mine's on a very small rural road.
Right.
And it does exit out onto what is potentially one of the most dangerous miles in the Duchess County on Slay Quarry Road.
Michael, could, could the applicant, assuming for a moment, could the applicant simply agree to the previous owner's commitment of traffic and stuff without going through all this rigmarole? If he looked down and said, these are all the restrictions that the town has put on them, and I agree with them all, that was given to the previous owner, will that, will that work?
Will contain those once again.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make it less complicated. Indeed, it's not going to change.
Not asking for a, you know, any kind of a detailed traffic analysis or whatever.
Okay.
It could be, it could be simply a, you know, certified statement that, you know, look, we're going to be basically operating at the same scale or lesser scale than has occurred in the past, et cetera.
Basically, it's the way it's been the last few years. The economy around here, if they're not building homes, we're not selling them.
The number of truck movements, I don't believe, is dealt with in the permit. What is dealt with in the permit is the size of the vehicles as well as the days of operation, days and hours of operation.
Right.
So that's why the question of the, the frequency of the activity occurs.
Because that's a hot button for those folks that live in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, we would prefer to use dump trailers as opposed to triaxles because you would have half as many trucks coming in and out as far as volume goes, and there's less impact on the road that way. But that's up to, you know, town highway superintendent really, and you guys.
That I can tell you won't happen. You won't get off of White School House Road onto Slay Quarry Road.
Yeah, we may wind up having to go out the other way, out to 308.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the planning board? Okay, let me read the resolution I have here. The Town of Ryhmck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the December 17th, 2013 application by Redwing Properties as successor to owner Vincent Kinland for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of renewal and modification of the town issued authorization for both continued mining and processing dry screen only of sand and gravel for maximum of 25 acres of a 37.5 acre total life of mine area as situated on the west side of White School House Road in the rural countryside RC5 and soil mine overlay district on 241 acres controlled by the peremptive. The introduction of subaqueous mining involving the excavation of a nine-acre 35-foot deep pond, 37.5 acre total life of mine area and the related installation of approximately 4,000 feet of turtle fence, all is described in supporting documentation presented by Griggs Lang Consulting Geologists, Inc., including the renewed and modified land reclamation permit under Article 27 Environmental Conservation Law Title 27 for the Kinland Mine Facility DEC ID and the number given issued by DEC on Part 27, 2013. On the one, accepts the subject application for special use permit and site plan review and approval as adequate review by the planning board, the board's advisors, and the public. Conditional fine receipt card to January 15th, 2014 of documentation, the transfer of the above cited New York State DEC mined land reclamation permit from Vincent Kinland to Redwing Properties, Inc., has either occurred or in strict accordance with the below stated New York State DEC requirement or has been subsequently occurred, and you said that you will, you'll be able to provide that without any problem. Two, consistent with the below stated position taken by New York State DEC, classifies the proposed action as an unlisted action under SEACER for which coordinated environmental quality review is not required and has not been undertaken by New York State DEC and for which the planning board will be issuing an independent determination of significance. I will read this. Under the State Environmental Quality View Act SEACER, the project associated with this permit is classified as an unlisted action and the Department of Environmental Conservation has determined that it will not have a significant effect on the environment. Other involved agencies may reach an independent determination of environmental significance for this project. Three, schedules a combined public hearing on the subject application for Monday, February 3rd, 2014 at 6:45?
Mm-hmm.
6:45? Probably won't be 6:45. 45 PM and directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements of Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12566 and 12577. Delegates Planning Board members, who would like to go there with me?
I'll go with you.
Don't all speak up at once.
That's a loaded question. Who wants to go with me?
Okay. Michael and Melvin, they'd like to field visit through the 37.5 acre life of mine area and report their observations at the time of public review. While noted, the Conservation Advisory Board has inducted prior review of this matter and sent comments there into New York State DEC on November 7th, 2012, which comments were responded to on a point-by-point basis within the January 7th, 2013 letter from Griggs Lang Consulting Geologists, Inc. to New York State DEC, refers to subject applications to the CAB for additional comment if any. Six, requests additional information from the applicant for presentation either prior to or at the public hearing as to the projected number, total, and peak day and duration seasonal in years of heavy truck movements associated with the operation of the facility within 37.5 acre life of mine area under its new ownership and in consideration of the volume of material assessed through authorization of subaqueous mining. In comparison of this information to the operation under its prior ownership and in the absence of authorization of subaqueous mining, should such information be presented prior to the public hearing, directs the chairman to inform the information of the town highway superintendent and the planning board engineer for review and comment. In processing the subject applications, the planning board asserts, and the applicant has acknowledged, there is consideration neither intended nor requested at this time of an application under review for the past several years by New York State DEC for expansion of the life of mine area beyond its currently authorized 37.5 mine acres to as much as 141 acres. It is understood this application is a subject of a January 12th, 2009 positive declaration issued by New York State DEC in its designated role as lead agency under SEACER and related requirement for preparation of a draft EIS, which draft EIS has heretofore been deemed incomplete by New York State DEC. It is further understood that should expansion of the life of mine area be approved by New York State DEC, any conduct of mining within the expanded life of mine area would, like the present proposal, be subject to the conformance with the Town Code Chapter 125 zoning. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Some move.
Discussion. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. If, you can give me your phone number so I can, you know, we can get in touch and we can set up when we'll have the site listed.
Yeah.
Any days better than any other for you?
When are you planning on going out?
When it gets warm.
June. Between now and...
I don't know.
I think that was today.
Zero, we have 50.
I'm going for 50.
Yeah, me too. I'm figuring the week, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, or if you want to wait till next week.
Next week will be warmer.
Next week.
It's supposed to be warmer at the end of this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not going to be around on Friday.
Well, how about next week sometime? I'll call you and we'll try to set something up next week because it's supposed to be in the 40s already.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, what else do we have there? All right, we have a ZBA referral. Sally Culpec and Catherine Clark, 611 Lane, Area Variance. Basically, planning board review and recommendation in the matter of application for area variance to increase to the maximum aggregate of permitted square footage of accessory structures from 1,500 square feet to 2,104 square feet on a parcel within the rural agriculture RA10 district for purposes of accommodating construction of a proposed 952 square foot two-car garage and storage building. And I have a draft...
What am I not getting about the math?
I'm sorry?
What am I not getting about the math? The 952?
Well, I think that what they have now is under 1,500 square feet.
Okay.
But when they add the 952 to what they currently have, it's going to exceed the 200 square feet to 2104. Like I'm, that's what I'm assuming it is.
Okay.
And the resolution I have...
Separate meeting here.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. I lost control somewhere.
I'm in order. You need a gavel.
I never know what the good stuff is.
Permitted square footage from 1,500 to accommodate the construction.
So, how's the bank building going?
What am I not getting?
Good, good. You're going to come and do this again? Where do I go off the rails?
It's going to 2,100 square foot and it's an addition of 952 square foot.
It just doesn't add up.
Well, it's probably, it must be 1,200, it's existing 1,200 or so.
Okay. So it's, so it's, see, the, it's not consistent, you know? So somewhere there already under the 1,500, it's allowable.
Right, they're under it now, right. But this is going to put them over to...
And this will put them over the 1,500, so they want to go.
Right.
They were before us before, right?
I don't, I don't...
Yes, they were. Yes, they were.
What were they doing?
Glad you came around. I think they were building the building.
Oh, okay.
Do you remember that, Tony?
Oh, okay.
Sean Lemon Lane, Catherine Clark, and they were before us just a few years ago to build this building. Is it this building? Is that your recollection? I thought it was an accessory.
I don't, I, I do not remember.
I remember.
I don't remember. I don't remember.
Not that it changes anything, I'm just, it's just trying to get it, set in my head.
Let me read this draft resolution and see what you all think. The Town of Ryhmck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Sally Culpec and Catherine Clark, ZBA Case 852. It finds the requested variance to authorize increase in the maximum aggregate permitted square footage of accessory structures from 1,500 square feet to 2,14 square feet to accommodate the construction of a proposed 952 square foot two-car garage studio storage building on a parcel within the rural agriculture RA10 district for reasons of planning, zoning, environmental issues in the context of the existing patterns of residential development in the RA10 district. The planning board understands there to be the presence of practical difficulties cited in the application and recommends the ZBA relife on its own study of facts and decide this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth in Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125, dash, 124, C and D. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Approved.
Second?
Aye.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything further anyone wishes to bring up at this time? Hearing nothing. Ready to make a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Get them, please.
Yeah, let's let Art go home and plug up the fleet.
And a second to that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And adjourned at 7:04...
38.
39, 38, 7:38.